If you have any questions, I'm more than happy to answer.
Hi, good morning. I'm Laura Rossi. I'll be speaking as the expert witness with traffic, and specifically about the traffic study that was done for the property.
And you have been sworn?
Yes, I have been.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, I'm Laura Rossi. First, I would like to introduce myself. I'm a professional engineer with Southwest Engineering and Design. I took my professional engineering exam focusing in transportation. I have five years' experience in transportation and traffic engineering, and before I moved to this area, I was working with Florida Department of Transportation Projects in Orlando. I began this traffic study by evaluating the existing traffic patterns at the intersection of West Reta and Harvey Street. I performed the traffic counts on March 24th, 2017. I took counts during the peak hourly residential traffic times, which are from 7:00 a.m. to 9:00 a.m. and 4:00 p.m. to 6:00 p.m. For the traffic study, I analyzed the highest traffic generation use that could possibly use this property. I consulted the Institute of Transportation Engineers Trip Generation Manual to find that use that would generate the most traffic. I assumed that the historic building would not be demolished and would have to be used to hold the new land use. A pharmacy drugstore without a drive-through window actually produced the most traffic out of all the possible uses that could use that location. I used the traffic demand to analyze -- of the pharmacy to analyze how it would affect the intersection at Reta and Harvey, and my calculations concluded that even the worst-case scenario used for the property, which was this pharmacy, did not change the level of service of either Harvey nor Reta. The existing level of service of both roads is a Level of Service A, and it will remain a Level of Service A even if the property is used as something other than a residential home. To be specific, the Level of Service A is defined as free-flowing traffic with individual users unaffected by the presence of others in the traffic stream. It is important to notice that this was all analyzed during the peak hour of traffic, so the peak hour of traffic is -- will be and is performing at the best possible condition for this road. So in my expert opinion, the comprehensive plan change will have no effect on the surrounding roadway's current function, and the drivers will not notice a change in how Reta and Harvey will operate. Thank you.
It's now common knowledge that my clients intend to renovate the existing residence on the site and lease it to Carmelo's Restaurant, but this Flume Amendment and the rezoning that will follow this hearing are big-picture changes which theoretically would permit a variety of non-residential uses. You're not approving something that would just allow a restaurant. That's the special exception, which is afterwards. As you heard from Jason Green, the city has adopted a vision through its policies and its comprehensive plan to allow for mixed use and expansion and reconfiguration of its downtown economic core. As this vision is implemented and the edges between residential and non-residential use get blurred, it naturally raises concerns of the homeowners in the area. When Mrs. Chupka, who lives across Harvey Street from the subject property, expressed those concerns, my client reached out to Dr. Mrs. Chupka to see if together their concerns could be addressed. I'm happy to tell you that my client and Dr. Mrs. Chupka together identified and agreed to several development conditions that they believe will ease the transition of this site from residential to commercial and further ensure compatibility between the uses. I presented them to you before we began the hearing, and I request that these listed items be made conditions of the Flume Amendment and the rezoning that you'll hear next. Additionally, both 321 Dynasty LLC and Dr. and Mrs. Chupka requested the city replace the "No Through Truck" sign. There was one, but we can't find it now. It shows up on Google Earth, but it's not actually on the road now. That was on West Reta Esplanade, across the street from the subject property, as part of this Flume Amendment rezoning and special exception approval. And we further request placement of no parking signs on Harvey Street except in the existing dedicated cutouts. We believe that's what's intended now. The paint prohibiting parking has kind of worn off, but you have the two cutouts, and people, when they fill up, tend to park where they're not supposed to. So we would request, particularly as we transition this block to fully non-residential uses, that you put up signage to indicate where the parking is and is not permitted on Harvey Street. This requested Flume Amendment will continue this block's transition from residential to non-residential uses. This change is appropriate and consistent with your comprehensive plan. The proposed conditions and requests will ease this transition and further ensure the non-residential and residential uses at this edge of the city's urban core remain good neighbors. The Planning Commission recommended approval of this request. The city planning staff recommends approval, and we request this council approve the future land use amendment from low-density residential to urban village with the proposed conditions and the two sign recommendations. We're available if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
The intervener is given an opportunity if they choose to cross-examine the expert witnesses that were provided by the applicant, and she's nodding she has no cross-examination. Does the intervener have a presentation to make?
No, sir. Okay, so this is a public hearing. If you would like to speak on this item, please make your way to this podium, state your name, and that you have been sworn, and you have three minutes.
Good morning. My name is Allison Birch, and I have been sworn. I am the president of the Charlotte County Chamber of Commerce. The Chamber Board voted recently to support the staff recommendations to amend the city's comprehensive plan, future land use map, for the property at 321 West Reta Esplanade, from low-density residential city to urban village city, and also to rezone the property from neighborhood residential to city center. The property, which is next to the Chamber's Puntagorda office, has been vacant for years, and we believe that the plan to repurpose the home for a restaurant will have a positive economic impact on Puntagorda, and we ask that you support the staff's recommendation. Thank you.
Thank you. If you would like to speak, please make your way to this podium, state your name. You have three minutes.
Good morning, counsel. Harvey Goldberg, City of Puntagorda, and member of the Senate -- the City of Puntagorda Planning Commission. I have missed one. Joan, would you please put up the aerial that you used prior to the -- of the city block? That one, yes. Thank you very much. If you look at the city block, it's important way to look at this project is that the restaurant will not be a commercial encroachment into a residential block. Instead, the restaurant will simply be removing a residential use or unit out of what would be completely a commercial block. I would like for these comments to be reflected in the public hearings as well for Z-0117 and SE-0117. Thank you.
Mayor, Mr. Goldberg, just are you speaking in the capacity of an individual or on behalf of the planning commission?
I'm speaking in the capacity of an individual.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak? Please make your way.
My name is Bill Leach. I have been sworn. I'm a resident of PGI. I guess I'm the first person with the black hat to come forward. I have some ongoing concerns about anything that affects the comprehensive plan, especially the encroachment of any commercial use in a residential area. I'm glad the slide is up presently. The only thing separating this, if it is approved, is a street directly connected to what is definitely a residential area. I realize that the council is seeking to increase business in town, and I support that. I love Carmelo's Restaurants. One of my favorite places to go. However, I don't see an overwhelming benefit to this community to rezone this property as commercial, and I think that's something that the council has to take in very serious consideration anytime a zoning plan is considered. Is it a direct overwhelming positive -- will it have a direct overwhelming positive effect on the overall community? I don't see this as being such. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? You can form a line.
Good morning. My name is Kathy Getz. I've been sworn. I'm a resident of the historic district. I've lived here for eight years, and this property has been vacant for 10 years. It's in the overlay, excuse me, the historic overlay, so therefore the usage would be very difficult. I've been in it. I know what the situation is with the building. I think it would be very positive for you to approve this and to move forward, and I'm in favor of this project. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Good morning. Patty Allen, General Manager of Fisherman's Village, and I have been sworn. I'm glad that Mr. Goldberg asked for this map because I'm looking at this map, and I really see this as a wonderful addition to this area here, and I encourage you to improve this. This project is a beautiful project, and I really am very impressed that the two groups worked together to come to a wonderful solution, and that's what Puntagorda is all about. It's a great -- it's a great project, and I look forward to one day eating there. Thank you.
Anybody else?
Hi, my name's Dennis Slaughter. I've been sworn. I'm a neighbor in this neighborhood. I live on Gilchrist Street. I've been in the Puntagorda area for over 20 years, and I totally am in favor of this and the staff's recommendation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Make your way.
Good morning. Marilyn Smith Mooney, and I have been sworn. I am a resident of Puntagorda for 24 years now. Spent 12 years on that side of the dais, and in all of the time I've been in this community, these types of innovative decisions, ideas, visions, this is what makes this community continue to shine and be unique. We have done this with houses down on Virginian, Sullivan, over a period of time. Rather than get rid of historic buildings because no one wants them for their current use, we find a way to repurpose them in a tasteful manner, and I can't think of anything more tasteful than this project. I think it will be tremendous asset to the area. I don't think it will be a detriment to historic district. I am a supporter for all of the years I've been here of the historic district, and I think it is a wonderful decision to go and support this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Last call.
Good morning. My name is Jean McPherson, and yes, I have been sworn. I live in Puntagorda Isles. Tell me, please, what do the lights mean, and does that pertain to me?
Yes, it's a three-minute. Yep, you get a yellow, and then you get the red.
Fine, thank you.
So it's timing.
Generally speaking, I think zoning is very good, and I think it's problematic when exceptions are made. But having said that, I'm more interested in what the residents that are there now feel about the proposal rather than what I might think about it, and I haven't heard anyone that I know of who lives there who has spoken. Is that -- is there no one here who lives there who is opposed to it? Then that is pretty impressive for me, and that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anybody else like to speak? Public comment. Now would be the time. Make your way to the podium for comments.
Move to close public --
Two more times.
Okay.
Anybody like to speak? Please make your way to the podium. This is the last call for public comment. Okay.
Move to close public hearings.
We have a motion a second to close the public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. I would just like to start and say I did do a site visit at the property last year sometime when the idea first came to fruition, and at that time, some of the ideas were concepts, but it looks like it's all been worked out with the neighborhood. I know this was on the last council meeting agenda, so we've had ample time to have input from any concerned party, and I am happy to see that the conditions have been proposed and hopefully adopted with the approval of this change.
Yes, I've had the pleasure of being able to visit the site as well and have conversation with the developer and Carmelo, and I, having volunteered in the community for a long time and worked with the Citizens Master Plan and talked about the urban planning concepts, this has been a problem property ever since 2004, and trying to look at this and see who would want to live in this as a residence is an issue, but maintaining the character of this, it's going to be a contribution to the community, to the historic district. So I think it's -- it serves both purposes, so it's really great, and I support.
Gary, and then we'll --
I just want to say, as I'm pretty sure all of us have, have visited the site, when I visited the site and I had a conversation with Mr. Lashley, I did ask him what the neighbors thought. He expressed that he was going to make a concerted effort to address those concerns. I want to commend all parties involved. Thank you very much for coming to terms for the development of this. I just want to make one other comment that shouldn't affect the way we vote, but relative to the traffic study, I believe it was done very conservatively, and I don't believe it addressed, which is I think another positive aspect to it, that if you're coming from the south side on 41, you have an alternate way to get to the restaurant by basically coming down Taylor to Marion and then through the public parking lot that doesn't address any of the streets that were in question. So the numbers, if anything, are even more conservative, and I feel that because this property has been vacant for so long, this is a very appropriate repurposing, and I just thank you all for the innovation and also for the open mindedness and the ability to come to terms between the affected parties. Thank you very much.
I'd like to reiterate that as well. I have had the pleasure of talking with Mr. Lashley and also Carmelo, and I've visited the property. It's absolutely a beautiful home inside, and I'm happy to see that the historic preservation of the home itself is going to be intact when this is over. I am thankful that everybody, both parties, have been able to reach an agreement and that everyone is fairly happy with the outcome of that, so I commend you all for taking the time to do that and put that together. I support all the conditions of approval. I don't have a problem with any of that, and I'm firmly in favor of keeping Reta a two-way road for various reasons, but this is one of them. So thank you all. I also think that this will keep the historic charm of our city intact as well as offering a new opportunity for the downtown business community. So thank you all very much for all your hard work to put this together, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Yeah, this is a very impressive project, and like former mayor said, this is a beautiful repurposing of an historic home where, you know, sometimes we have to think of ways which we can use what we have, and I have also visited the site map with the developer as well, and just very impressed with it, and I think that this leads us in a direction in which we're able to create that critical mass of business in the downtown so that we have more of our year-round unpatronage as well. So I'm fully in support of this.
All very good points. Yes, Nancy.
I just have one question, and that is a concern about the request for no parking on Harvey except where we have cutouts. I haven't looked at the curbs to see, excuse me, where we might have had yellow painted or not, but throughout the historic district, people park along the side streets. The whole park, it's a, you know, the park is the park. Yes, we're going to be providing additional parking when we get done with the whole project through the diagonal head-in parking. And I understand that, at least I believe that the purpose of that might be to discourage restaurant patrons from parking over there, but we have parking all along all of the side streets in the historic district, and I don't, I think if I was a patron of the restaurant, I'm probably going to park in the City Hall parking lot somewhere over there as opposed to Harvey Street, so that's the only, the only part of the agreement that I had any concern about.
Do you know the curb situation, or the curbs yellow at this time? Do we know?
No, but --
They're not? Okay.
No, you can park along there. Obviously, you can't park a certain amount of feet with a stop sign.
Right.
But that Harvey Street is, we have people that park there for City Hall business. We have a lot of people that park there for all of the events that occur in the park. You need to remind ourselves that when the park is done, we're going to have diagonal parking along Reta. You will no longer be able to park on the grass. Yes, we will have some parking areas in there, so people will continue to use that along with the other side streets for park activities. The way I read the agreement is that they're requesting it. It's not --
Right. I guess for that one, maybe we should take that on its own, you know, when we get further down the road to really look at what the whole system, to use Mitchell's words, to look at the whole system that we have down there and make sure that it's, you know, clear to people where the parking is and where it's not. If the curbs aren't yellow now, I don't know that I'm in favor of including that right now until we really look at that whole section.
I would agree. Let's look at the system.
Okay.
Yeah, because I think once we get the head-in parking, things will change.
Things will, things will change.
Yes.
So we're in favor of just keeping that in advance for now?
Yes.
Okay. Any other comments?
I'm going to make a motion for approval.
Okay, so we need a specific motion, which Jones --
Jones is going to say to us, yes.
Go ahead, Joan. I was --
You need to approve, make the recommendation to approve CP-01-17 with the proposed conditions of approval. In this particular item, the parking is not listed, so it would be okay to approve it as is.
Okay.
And to continue the second adoption reading to a date certain April 19th.
And to direct the court to transmit the approval at first reading to the Economic Opportunity --
Department of Economic Opportunity.
I'm going to make a motion to what Joan just said.
That's your motion? Okay.
Including David.
Karen, did you get the motion? Okay, Karen's got the motion, and Lynn has the second.
Request for clarification, the "No Through Truck," the replacement of the "No Through Truck" sign. Is that something that you're directing as part of this?
No, that's not it. We can --
If it was there, we can replace it, correct? Yeah, that's a staff --
Yeah, I mean, I don't --
We don't see anybody running in the room from the other side, so that sounds fine. If it was there, it will go back up again. If not, when we do look at the parking situation, we can consider that again at that time.
All right.
And that doesn't apply to garbage, our garbage trucks, obviously.
No, no, no. We got to pick up the garbage.
Yeah, we got to pick up the garbage, so.
Twice, twice a week.
Maybe three times. No, I'm kidding. Yeah, because I read that in one of the reports about the garbage truck, and that, you know, they're on the roads no matter what, so. Okay, so we have the motion, we have the second. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Carried unanimously. Next, we have Z-01-17.
Yes, and this also is the first reading of an ordinance that was continued from March 15th, which I'll read by title only. An ordinance of the City Council of Puntagorda, Florida, rezoning 24,118 square feet of property generally described as 321 West Reta Esplanade, Puntagorda, Charlotte County, Florida, and being more particularly described in Exhibit A attached here too from its current zoning classification of neighborhood residential NR10 to city center, CC, providing for conflict and severability and providing an effective date.
Good morning, for the record. Terry Tubbs, Urban Design Manager, and I have been sworn. For this rezoning, the following findings can be drawn concerning the request. These are specific criteria for rezoning requests. The property owner, Bruce Lashley, has proposed this zoning amendment for 321 West Reta from neighborhood residential to city center. Per the requirements, the proposed zoning amendment has been noticed in a newspaper 15 days in advance of the public hearing held today. A notice of public hearing was posted on the subject property 15 days prior to the hearing as required by law. Property owners within 200 feet of the property lines have been noticed, as well as notice has been published in a newspaper of general circulation. When pertaining to the rezoning of land, the recommendations of the Planning Commission to the City Council required by subsection 26-15.5 shall show that the Planning Commission has studied and considered the proposed change in relation to the following were applicable. One, whether the proposed change would be contrary to the land use plan and would have an adverse effect on the comprehensive plan. This request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, as outlined in the previous presentation and approved by City Council. The existing zoning pattern to the north, we have city center and public. To the south, we have public and neighborhood residential. To the west, we have neighborhood residential, and to the east, we have public. And this zoning map shows the existing zoning in the area. The purple area is the current city center zoning. The lighter color is the neighborhood residential. The green is the public use, but the city center does abut the residential throughout the city. The population density pattern and possible increase of overtaxing of the load on public facilities such as schools and utilities. The proposed use is a restaurant and is directly across the street from a commercially zoned property with a hotel and a restaurant and bar as part of the use, excepting one single-family structure, who has stated no objection to the request. The rest of this Block 7 is zoned for public municipal offices and public parking lot and commercial uses. The proposed restaurant use meets all adopted level of service standards. Therefore, there will be no negative effect on schools or utilities. Whether existing district boundaries are illogically drawn in relation to existing conditions on the property proposed for the change. The property is bounded by property zoned city center to the north with a hotel and restaurant use, City Hall and other government offices to the northeast and south, a public park to the northwest, and by one single-family residence to the south and one residence across, to the southwest across Harvey Street. Extending the city center zoning district across West Reta is a logical extension of district boundaries for the rezoning request and is consistent with the existing zoning pattern in the city. Neighborhood residential zoned properties either abut or are across the street from the city center zoning district. The city center zoning district is a mixed-use zoning district which allows residential uses within the city center zoning district in conjunction with office, retail, or other commercial uses. Whether changing, changed or changing conditions make the passage of the proposed amendment necessary. The structure has been vacant since approximately 2005, and the prior property owners have moved out of the immediate area. The rezoning will provide an opportunity for the, to be reused in a logical manner, consistent with surrounding commercial uses, and will preserve a historic structure. This is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, specifically Objective 1.1.6, which is to protect historic resources, and Policy 1.1.6.1, which provides for the adaptive reuse of historic structures. Whether the proposed change will adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood. The proposed use will not adversely influence living conditions in the neighborhood. The proposed rezoning is consistent with existing zoning pattern in the city, with residentially zoned properties abutting or across the street from city center zoned property. Additionally, pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 12.4, per N.F., a buffer is required when boundaries of non-residential uses abut a less intensive use. The buffer area is required to consist of trees and shrubs of such a type, height, spacing, and arrangement to effectively transition the activity on the lot from the neighboring area. The code includes the following option for buffering. An earthen berm fence or wall of a location, height, design, and material approved by the zoning official or designee may be substituted to offset a portion of the required planting and/or buffer. Fences and walls, if substituted, shall be a minimum of six feet in height and constructed of materials congruous with the materials of the main building. The existing wall on the site, which will contain the use, is 10 feet in height, and it has over 20 feet of existing buffering on the Harvey Street side of the property. The required buffer between single-family use and mixed use is 20 feet. The wall is set back 21.4 feet from the Harvey Street right-of-way. There is an existing mature landscaping along the buffer wall. Therefore, there is sufficient room to ensure a buffer that meets all code requirements can be maintained. Furthermore, there is additional separation from the residential zoning district across Harvey Street, as the Harvey Street right-of-way is platted at 66 feet wide. Therefore, there is approximately 87 feet between the Therefore, there is approximately 87 feet between the residential properties across Harvey Street and the buffer wall on the exterior of the proposed use of the subject property. There is ample parking with the public parking lot to the south of the property pursuant to Chapter 26, Section 10.6, parking in the City Center zoning district, which states that all uses other than residential are required to have one space per 1,000 square feet. Furthermore, in the City Center zoning district, existing buildings, which were legally constructed without the provision of onsite parking and infill housing on existing lots of record, will be considered conforming as to parking. Such buildings are eligible for change of use and renovation without providing additional parking. As a comparison, outside of the City Center zoning classification, the city's land development regulations require 10 spaces for 1,000 square feet of restaurant use, cubicle content enclosed space. The proposal is for approximately 6,000 square feet of restaurant uses, which would require 60 parking spaces in any other mixed-use commercial zoning classification other than the City Center zoning district. A typical seat count parking requirement in municipal zoning codes is one space per four seats of restaurant use. Thus, a 250-seat restaurant would require 63 spaces, which is rounded up from 62.5. With approximately 90 spaces readily available in the existing public parking lot on this block, there should be ample parking to accommodate the proposed use along with the existing uses. Therefore, the proposed use meets and exceeds City Code requirements. The courtyard is walled in, and any outdoor activity will be screened from off-site view. Outside of the wall, abutting the residential properties, there is existing mature landscape, which will help buffer between the uses and meets the buffering requirements of the City Code. Number seven, whether the proposed change will create or excessively increase traffic congestion or otherwise affect public safety. As you heard earlier, a traffic study was done on the site and the proposed use and the location and proximity to the existing hotel and restaurant, the change will not create an excessive increase in traffic congestion or otherwise negatively affect public safety. Additionally, the property is across the street from existing commercial uses. Whether the proposed change will create a drainage problem? The proposed change will not create a drainage problem. The proposed additional building for the kitchen will meet all current requirements for stormwater retention. Number nine, whether the proposed change will seriously reduce light and air to adjacent areas? The proposed change will not have any effect on light or air to adjacent areas. There is an existing landscape buffer which faces the residentially zoned properties across Harvey Street. Number 10, whether the proposed change will adversely affect property values in adjacent area? The proposed change is not anticipated to adversely affect property values in the adjacent area. Number 11, whether the proposed change will be a deterrent to the improvement or development of adjacent property in accord with existing regulations? The proposed change will not be a deterrent to the development of adjacent property. Whether the proposed change will constitute a grant of privilege to an individual owner as contrasted with public welfare? Approval of this request will not grant a special privilege to an individual and is appropriate for the public welfare by ensuring the historic structure is rehabilitated through adaptive reuse and maintained into the future. The proposed change also adds to the city's commercial base, which is consistent with the city's strategic plan. This is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, Objective 1.1.12 for historic preservation and downtown redevelopment, and Policy 1.1.14.2, which encourages pedestrian-oriented development and mixed-use development and redevelopment. Whether there are substantial reasons why the property cannot be used in accord with existing zoning? The property could be used as a residential dwelling in the existing zoning. However, there has been no interest by any parties to purchase the property for that use, and the property has been vacant for over 10 years. Whether the change suggested is out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood or the city? Staff's finding is that the change is not out of scale with the needs of the neighborhood or the city. And whether it is impossible to find other adequate sites in the city for the proposed use and districts already permitting such use? While there are other adequate sites in the city for a restaurant, repurposing a contributing historic structure in the National Register District helps ensure the continued maintenance of the structure and is consistent with the provisions of the historic district and historic sites as listed in the city's comprehensive plan under Policy 1.1.14.11. Based on the findings presented herein, the Punta Gorda Urban Design offers the following conclusions. Based on known factors to include use, site planning, and availability of infrastructure, staff considers this application in order. The proposed request meets or exceeds the requirements of the land development regulations for site development, parking, buffering, and proposed setbacks. Conclusion number three, the request is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan for Policy 11.8.1.6 of the historic element, and approval of this request will remove any obstacles to the rehabilitation of a qualified historic site and structure and provides for the continued use and adaptive reuse of this structure. Conclusion number four, the city block where this is proposed residential to commercial conversion was identified as a mixed-use transition zone to the downtown core as identified in the 2005 Punta Gorda CRA Sharette Study. The study provided guidance in the development of the 2025 Punta Gorda Comprehensive Plan. Based on the stated conclusions, the Punta Gorda Planning Commission and Urban Design Division recommend approval of Z 01-17.
One question I have, Terry. Take a breath. One of the proposed conditions, number 11, the existing 10-foot-high perimeter wall shall remain on the property and be maintained in a first-class condition, except to allow for construction of the kitchen, dumpster, and west loading area. Is, if they take that down, are they allowed to put it back up exactly the way it is? It's not going to be a problem for them?
Yes, as long as the zoning is approved, City Center zoning district allows a zero street yard setback, so yes.
So, they can take it down and put it back up the way it is now?
Yes, they can.
Just rebuild it? Okay, thank you. Any other questions before we hear from the applicant? Okay.
Good morning again, Jerry Waxler with McCory Law Firm. I have been sworn. I'm representing Bruce and Barbara Lashley as managers of 321 Dynasty LLC, the current owners of the subject property, where requesting a rezoning from Neighborhood Residential NR 10 to City Center. As I did last time, I'll be presenting two witnesses. Their testimony will be similar to what you heard, but this is a separate hearing, and I have to make a separate record, so please bear with me. Before I call back Jason and Laura, yes, sir?
If you want to call them up and ask them if they would adopt the testimony that they presented in the previous hearing as their testimony in this proceeding and remain under oath to do so, you can dispense with having them repeat unless they're.
That would be great. I'll do that. Jason does have just a couple of additional comments, I believe, that didn't pertain to the land use, but that's fine. We'll keep that as concise as possible. Before I do that, I'd ask Tom Jackson to step up to the podium.
Good morning, Tom Jackson, Utilities Department. For the record, I have been sworn.
Good morning, Tom. Are you familiar with the property that's the subject of this rezoning, 321 West Reda Espinade? Can you please tell me, based on your position and your knowledge of the city's utility system, will the change from residential use to a commercial use, is there sufficient capacity within the city's utility system to handle the additional impacts resulting from that change?
Yes, there is.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it. With that, I'll bring up Jason Green.
Good, I don't have to repeat everything. My name is Jason Green. I'm a planning manager for Wyler Engineering. Sorry about this part. I have a bachelor's in geography and a master's in public administration. I have been sworn. I am a member of the American Institute of Certified Planners and Association of State Floodplan Managers as a certified floodplain manager, practicing the planning in the state of Florida for 14 years. And previous experience includes as planning manager for DeSoto County, responsible for reviewing, interpreting, implementing comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, policies, future land use maps, land development regulations, zoning and development standards, and public policy related to land development. Now, yes, some of the comments I was going to, I had prepared are also what I had previously stated, so I appreciate the opportunity to recognize those as part of the, part of the record. Additionally, just a couple of items. Your Chapter 26 Land Development, of your Land Development Code, Section 3.9, City Center District specifically calls out, and I'll paraphrase here, the City Center anchors the surrounding residential neighborhoods while also serving the broader community. The district is coded to accommodate the higher overall intensity of development required to support the city. It is to be expected that the City Center District will be expanded over time to meet growth and demand for downtown facilities and services. Looking at the proposed uses and also the uses that are permitted under your City Center zoning district and also the surrounding uses, the proposed uses, obviously, for the City Center application are also consistent with what's going on. Basically, what we talked about before, your offices, you have a bar, restaurant, you have hotels. Those are all consistent with your City Center zoning district. They have that zoning. This property, if zoned City Center, would also fall under that category, be consistent with those surrounding uses. Basically, as I mentioned before, I talked about sensitive integration. You can accomplish that through design and/or operations per Section 4.1 of your Land Development Regulations. The use of sensitive integration, which includes design, operation considerations, allows the CC uses to be adjacent to its primary service area, which is the residential uses surrounding it. In essence, part of the greater neighborhood. One example of design considerations includes building design, such as roof and front porches, that allow a non-residential building to blend in with nearby residential uses. You've done that on many commercial buildings throughout the city. And as was mentioned before, you've repurposed historic homes in order to keep them in a historic character. Also, sensitive integration can be accomplished through the following provisions already within your Land Development Regulations. And as staff has pointed out, setbacks, buffers, lighting, architectural and building design elements, and again, covered by your Land Development Regulations with development standards and through your historic overlay district. Section 3.1 table, or, excuse me, Section 3.1 is a table that identifies City Center zoning district as a mixed-use district. It makes it ideal for close proximity to residential uses and generally offers a more compatible option than intense commercial districts such as a highway commercial, which obviously would not be appropriate in this area. So, pursuant to Section 16.11 zoning map amendments, the City Council shall use the following criteria in making your decisions regarding approval or disapproval of an amendment request. One, consistency with the comp plan. The City Center is consistent with the urban village, future land use map category, which you previously recommended approval of, as well as the goals, objectives, and policies identified in the application and as previously mentioned. Number two, compatibility policies. Again, the previously, previous points between the staff report and the application and our testimony, or, excuse me, my testimony, points out and highlights those consistencies. Number three, consistency with binding agreements. There are none that could be identified, binding agreements with the county, I should say. There are none that have been identified that are applicable. Number four, mitigation of traffic impacts. You've heard about that already, is being consistent with the level of service. And number five, compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods and uses. Design criteria, certificates of appropriateness, and clustering of similar uses are permitted within the CC zoning district and within similar, within proximity to the residential district and uses per discussion, as well as your city-adopted regulations, which indicate a desire to integrate uses so their close proximity can serve the entire neighborhood positively affirm this compatibility. Excuse me, excuse me. And number six, provisions of adequate public facilities, as was mentioned about the sewer, and that includes generally water, sewer, roadways, solid waste, those types of things that apply as far as facilities. It is my professional opinion that the requested rezoning from NR 10 to City Center is consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan, goals, objectives, and policies, the adopted land development regulations, as well as compatibility with and consistency with the surrounding pattern of development. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning again, Laura Rossi and I have been sworn. I want to adapt and maintain the previous testimony I gave for the property's comprehensive plan change. And I also wanted to reiterate that the rezoning of this property will have no effect on the surrounding roadway's current function, and drivers will not notice the change in either Reda nor Harvey. Thank you.
Thank you.
In making your decision on a rezoning application, your code requires you to consider, first, consistency with the comprehensive plan. You heard the testimony of Jason Green that this proposed rezoning is consistent with your comprehensive plan in that it promotes infill development, reduces density in the coastal high-hazard area, allows access via multiple modes of transportation. The second thing you should look at are compatibility policies, and the third would be compatibility with surrounding neighborhoods and uses. Jason testified about comp plan policies that encourage different uses to be located in proximity to one another, that facilitate integration of new development into older urban areas. Jason also testified about your land development regulations, which ensure compatibility through setbacks, sign restraints, buffering and landscape requirements, and retention of historic districts. You additionally heard testimony from Terry Tubbs to that effect as well. And finally, he discussed the existing land use pattern in the area and how this rezoning will match the depth of the current City Center zoning district across the street and continue the non-residential development that dominates the block. And fourth would be the mitigation of traffic impacts. Laura Rossi, P.E., our transportation engineer, testified with the addition of worst-case scenario traffic, the level of service along Reda Espinade and Harvey will remain at A, your highest functioning level. And finally, the provision of adequate facilities. There will be no impacts, no impacts to schools with the transition from a residential use to a non-residential use. And finally, you heard from Tom Jackson that there is capacity in your system to handle the additional demand from the transition from residential to a commercial use. As in the flume amendment, I present to council the list of conditions, which I passed out at the beginning of the comp plan provision. Should the council approve this request, we ask that these conditions be made a part of the approval. I neglected, however, during the comp plan, it references, the conditions reference in Exhibit A. I've put up Exhibit A here. I will make sure that a copy gets to your clerk. I borrowed that one from the Dr. and Mrs. Chupka's attorney, so I'd like to return it at the end of the hearing, but I will make sure that you have an Exhibit A that you see up there. Together with Dr. and Mrs. Chupka, we again request that the city replace the no-through truck sign on West Reda Espinade and place no parking signs on Harvey Street except in the existing dedicated parking cutout. We do understand that that it is, that area is, other than that, is, has been used, but we do think that as we add additional commercials to this area, there is value to protect the residents, that we limit some of the parking other than in those cutout areas, and we'd ask that you give consideration to that again. You recently approved the flume amendment to Irman Village. Approve of this rezoning will implement that new land use, further the goals of your comprehensive plan, be consistent with your LDRs, and be compatible with the surrounding neighborhood residential zoning, which is both residential and non-residential. Upon approval, 321 Dynasty LLC will present its request for a special exception for a restaurant, the last step required to bring Carmella's to this location. The Lashleys look forward to bringing life back to historic landmark and extending their legacy of positive contributions to the economic vitality of the city of Punta Gorda. Thank you.
Thank you. Again, would you like to?
For the record, my name is Katie Berkey. I'm an attorney and certified land planner at the Pavey's Law Firm in Fort Myers, and I have been sworn. I represent Dr. and Mrs. Chupka at 401 West Reda, and they have been recognized as intervenors in this case. They live directly across Harvey Street. And actually, I don't know if I can get the aerial backup, Terry, if you don't mind showing the parking cutaways. But first, with respect to the no-through sign being replaced, on the last case, there wasn't a clear decision how to proceed. It was on the table to replace it definitively or wait till all parking and through traffic was considered as a whole after the Gilchrist Park project. I urge you to take a firm stance on that today as part of this application to replace that sign. It would be greatly appreciated. And with respect to the parking, we respectfully request that all the conditions proposed by the applicant are adopted today and urge you to place no parking signs on Harvey, but to clarify just between West Reda and Marion Street was the intent of that petition. As the staff and applicant have confirmed in their testimony, they're in agreement that there is adequate parking to serve the proposed use. But I do want to remind you, it's a 250-seat restaurant that is proposed. And if the parking is adequate, then additional parking on that segment of Harvey Street is not needed, nor was it intended. Otherwise, there would have been more cutaways there to allow on street parking. And as Mr. Green testified earlier, the goal is to have a sensitive integration of this use and formalizing the no parking on that segment of Harvey would be a more sensitive integration of the proposed use. So, I urge you to take action on that today as well. And if you have specific questions related to the curbing and what is painted or not, I have Mrs. Chupka here, who can testify to that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you.
There, we're, I'm not reading where they're addressing the parking in these conditions.
If I may clarify to.
That agreement is going to need to be adopted as part of the approval.
Okay, so let's review. Maybe we can get it put up there. Just hold on one second.
I'm sure.
So, we can get the language, because it's not in the.
It was an action that you had to take as opposed to an action that we would have to take, and that's why I separated, made the request separate from the list of conditions that I gave.
Okay.
Yeah, there's actually two things that were in the agreement that was sent to us that are not on this list today.
Okay. Terry, you want to put those up?
You have them.
Put them on the overhead.
You have the agreement.
Number seven.
So are we approving based on what we received this morning or the agreement we received yesterday?
Agreement yesterday, April 3, 2017. I'm thinking that...
It makes a difference because of the parking.
I think that you want to approve them on both, have both of those conditions made part of the approval.
Well, we already approved the other, the other hearing without including the parking issue.
But this is more specific with respect to the rezoning, and it's the more appropriate place for that to be.
Okay.
Terry, it's in this document. It's in the actual agreement. You can have this one if you want to put it up there. I think it's number seven. Yep.
The actual agreement, the two conditions that Ms. Matthews is referring to, actually say that we would jointly petition you all to make those changes, to reinstall the no parking, the no-through-truck sign, and to install the no parking signs. So we have fulfilled that by coming here today to request those two conditions. In terms of the list of conditions, that would be conditions of the rezoning. I did not include those two because the conditions just request were a requirement that we request. We would like to see a direction that the no-through-truck sign be reinstalled on Reda Esplanade, and we would also like to see the council, as part of this petition, request that signs be installed on Harvey between Reda and Marion, designating no parking except in the cutouts.
Do you have a problem if this agreement is also made part of the rezoning approval?
I do not. We've recorded in the public record, so it's, it has already been recorded in the public records of the county, and we have no objection to me being part of this approval.
And the reason why I ask that question is that the agreement speaks to the fact that the agreement will run with the land and will be binding upon any successors and assigns of not only the applicant but by the purchasers in the future of the Chupka properties. The conditions for approval that were handed out this morning do not indicate that it is to run with the land and be upon successors and assigned. So I think we're better protected by adopting the agreement as part of the approval as well.
We have no objection to that. Again, the thought was that when you adopt a zoning and you attach conditions to the zoning, the zoning does run with the land, that it would have been unnecessary to repeat that, but we have absolutely no objection to adopting both.
Thank you.
Okay, questions before? Yes, go ahead.
On the no-through-truck signs, I know we're going to be talking about West Reda, I think, at a May city council meeting. Isn't it a May city council meeting?
Yes, I believe so.
Okay. But replacing the no-through-truck signs after we get done with the park project, that's not an issue with us. Harvey Street, again, let me reiterate. Harvey Street, Durin Street, Gilchrist Street, Gill Street, McGregor, Berry, Chastain, all of them, they're all used for parking for not only the neighborhood but for park activities. Whether or not there's going to be a restaurant next to the Freeman House really is not germane to this. What is germane to this is how people use those side streets in the historic district, and they're used for residences, for visitors, and for the park activities. That's not going to go away. Matter of fact, when we put diagonal parking on Reda, you will no longer be able to park on the grass in the park except for designated parking areas. Those side streets are going to be very, very important for those who use not only city hall but for the parks and all the park activities. So as a staff, as a staff, we cannot recommend putting no parking signs on Harvey.
Any other comments before we start the public hearing?
I'd like to speak.
Sure.